Seven. Good evening, welcome to the November 6, 2024 Pembroke Select Board Meeting. Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 9 and YouTube channel at Pembroke Meetings LS and is being recorded for broadcast at future dates. Comments made in open session will be recorded. Please join us and set it with good allegiance.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bless you. Bless you. We have a public hearing to open right at 7:00. Board of Assessors, FY25 Tax Classification Hearing. Jeanie, I'm going to turn that right over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Welcome to the 278th Annual Tax Rate Classification Hearing. Now, the classification hearing does not determine how much money can be raised through property taxes, and it doesn't decide on the tax rate. What you're going to be voting on determines the distribution, which is the percentage paid, of the tax levy amongst the various property classes. So, the estimated levy for fiscal year '25, and the levy is how much money can be raised through property taxation, is about $51.3 million. The total valuation of the town, and that's commercial, industrial, personal property, and residential, is about $4.266 billion. Now, using those numbers, that calculates to a uniform tax rate of $12.02 per thousand. It's a little bit less than what the tax rate was last year. Last year was $12.03 per thousand. The valuation by class breakdown, residential, which is Class 1, the total value is $3.78 billion. Commercial, which is Class 3, is $295 million. Industrial, Class 4, is $115 million. Personal property, Class 5, is about $73 million, for a grand total of $4.266 billion. This breakdown shows the percentage of each of the classes. The residential class makes up about 88.67% of the total valuation, and they pay 88.67% of the total levy. Commercial is 6.91%, industrial is 2.7%, and personal property is 1.771%. Again, that's the percent of the total valuation and the percent paid of the levy. Now, we've been asked before, why does my assessment go up if I haven't done anything to my house? Per Mass General Laws and the Department of Revenue, all assessors in the state are charged with calculating the values of the new assessments based on the market value, what's going on in the market. As you can see from this graph, obviously, average single-family sale prices have gone up at least for the past eight years. Between 2020 and 2021, there was a 17% increase in the average single-family sale price. Between '21 and '22, there was a 10% increase. Between '22 and '23, there was a 2% increase. Now, this could have been attributed to the fact that interest rates did go up. In fiscal year '24, the average single-family assessment was $5,850. It's currently $6,001, and that's the average single-family assessment. Now, using the fiscal year '25, average residential and commercial assessments and the taxes, using the uniform rate, tax rate of $12.02. Again, the average single-family residential assessment is about $6,001. Using the tax rate, average single-family residential tax bill is about $7,224. Average commercial property assessment, $1.365 million, and the average commercial tax bill is about $16,410. Again, using the uniform single tax rate of $12.02. This is the community comparison chart, and it's from fiscal year '24, which is last year. It's for all the single-rate towns in Plymouth County. As you can see, Pembroke is ranked number nine last year out of 22, so at least we're in the top half. Now, I just want everybody to realize that higher or lower tax rates are not necessarily an indicator or higher or lower tax bills. For example, there are two towns in Massachusetts, Colrain and Alfred, that in fiscal year '24 both had residential average tax bills of about $4,100. But Colrain had a tax rate of $18.98 per thousand, and Alfred had a tax rate of $10.48 per thousand. So even though their residential average bills were about the same, they had more than $8 difference in the tax rate. What the Select Board is going to be asked to vote on today is a split rate versus a uniform rate. Uniform rate means all the classes pay the exact same amount in tax rates. Split rate, what that does is it takes some of the residential burden, and it shifts it over to the commercial, industrial, and personal property, otherwise known as the CIP. What you're going to be voting on does not affect the total tax levy amount to be paid. It's always going to remain $51.3 million, but it does determine what portion of the total tax amount a particular property class is going to pay. Currently, residential properties make up about 89% of the town's total valuation, and the CIP makes up about 11% of the total valuation. Again, and that is also the percentage paid of the levy. If the Select Board votes for a 10% shift, the average residential taxpayer is going to save about $96 a year. The average CIP taxpayer is going to pay an additional $1,638 a year. If the Select Board votes to have the maximum shift, which is 50%, the average residential taxpayer is going to save about $462, and the average CIP taxpayer is going to bear an additional tax of about $8,200. Now, per Mass General Laws, residential has to pay at least 65% of their full and fair share of the levy. CIP can't pay more than 150% of their full and fair share of the levy. If the maximum shift is voted on, which is 50%, then for Pembroke, CIP would pay 16.5% of the levy instead of 11%. Now, the majority of cities and towns that vote to have a split tax rate have a much higher commercial base than Pembroke does. And keep in mind that chapter land, which is Chapter 61, 61A, and 61B, that's the farms, the bogs, the forestry, those are considered commercial, and they would pay the additional, the higher tax rate. Because of this, the Board of Assessors recommends to have a single tax rate. Now, one of the other that you're going to be voting on is the small commercial exemption. All right, so what's this? This is up to 10% of the commercial levy gets shifted from the commercial properties that qualify to the non-qualifying commercial and industrial taxpayers. And don't forget, chapter land properties are also in that. Who is eligible? Sole proprietors and partnerships of commercial properties, not industrial, just commercials. No more than 10 employees, and that's all locations company-wide. So think about Dunkin' Donuts in the center. They might only have nine employees, but we have to know that all locations company-wide has a lot more than nine employees, so they would not qualify. Total assessment of the property can't be more than $1 million. The business must be certified by the Department of Labor and Workforce Development, and if a parcel has multiple tenants, all have to be eligible businesses. So if you had a strip mall, and there's four units, three out of the four units are little mom-and-pop businesses with less than nine employees, they would qualify. Unit number four is a Dunkin' Donuts drive-thru. They're going to have more than 10 employees, so the entire strip mall is not going to qualify. Now, the benefit of this is up to 10% of the commercial levy can be shifted from the eligible parcels to the non-eligible parcels. There's a couple of things to consider. If the property is not owner-occupied, the tax benefit goes to the property owner and not the small business owner, that's the tenant. It's very difficult to track because we have to depend on the Department of Labor and Workforce Development for their information. Depending on ownership, the burden is sometimes shifted to other small business owners. So like the last example I just gave with the four units and three out of the four qualify, well, right down the street, you have a three-unit strip mall, and all three of them qualify. So this unit, this whole strip mall, would be shifting their tax burden onto this strip mall, even though three out of the four of them would qualify. So those three little mom-and-pops would be picking up the added revenue or the added taxes. Only 14 communities statewide have adopted the small commercial exemption. Now, the last list that we received from the Office of Labor and Workforce Development had about 400 businesses on it that have less than 10 employees. Of that 400, only less than 5% of the businesses would actually qualify for the small commercial Now, the residential exemption is also something that needs to be voted on. This has nothing to do with commercial, industrial, and personal property and just the residential part of it. And what this does is it shifts a portion of the tax burden from some eligible residences to other residential properties. It can lower the assessment of qualifying properties by up to 35%. Properties have to be owner-occupied as the main domicile, and it doesn't pertain to apartments, multifamily homes, second homes, or rentals. So which communities have accepted it? Large cities and towns with a lot of rental properties, like apartment buildings or homes that are rented. So think about Quincy in Boston, places like that. Resort communities with many seasonal residents. You have your summer home down Martha's Vineyard, you might be getting this residential exemption in that community. Things to consider is only 18 Massachusetts cities and towns have accepted the residential exemption. And the problem with it is that there's so many properties in Pembroke that are owner-occupied, you're shifting from a big portion to a small portion, and that could be an issue. Now, the open space discount shifts up to 25% of the tax levy burden of Class 2 open space, not to be confused with open space, chapter land, to other residential properties. Now, this one's an easy one. It's not applicable because Pembroke doesn't have any Class 2 properties, so we really don't have to worry about that. Because of all these factors, the Board of Assessors has recommended to vote no on the small commercial exemption, to vote no on the residential exemption, and to vote no on the open space discount. Questions?
Yes. Back on Slide 3, the FY25 Classification Hearing is the distribution of the values.
Wait, which one? Is that this one?
Slide 3?
Yeah.
No, sorry, this one. That bottom right says Slide 3 for me.
Got it.
Yeah, there we go. That one there, so it shows the commercial at 6.91%. If I remember correctly, from when I was doing the master plan, they went back, and the original master plan was from 2004, so like 20 years ago. And at that time, the commercial percent makeup was 11%. So obviously, it's shrunk by about 4% since then. Is that a function more of a growth on the residential side, or is that a function of exit on the commercial side?
It's actually a lot.
And on the growth side, is it because of the increase of values or because of the increase of supply?
There's multiple factors. The residential has gone up way more, way quicker than the commercial.
Supply-wise and...
How many new homes there are, essentially. And especially, I hate to say during COVID, but people use COVID as a excuse for a lot, but during COVID, commercial properties had a little harder time, and so residential properties went up higher. Think about what the market was doing in 2019 versus what it was doing in 2021. And real estate for residential went through the roof. I mean, through the roof. But it didn't do that for commercial. So even if you had the exact same number of residential versus commercial, because the residential, people paying so much money for their homes, and again, we have to assess based on that, residential was going up at a much higher rate than commercial was.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. I mean, you've depressed the commercial side of things, and the demand increases on the residential side, then you're going to see a distribution like this, even if commercial isn't exiting, it's just stagnant.
Yes.
Or barely keeping its head above water. And I mean, just for that kind of reason, obviously, we don't want to continue to push out commercial thing. We want to attract commercial. So, I mean, I agree entirely with your advisement about not splitting it, because if we do split it, it's going to depress commercial that much more.
And I mean, people have said that if you have, you know, three towns that all have a uniform rate, and then you got the town number four that has a split rate, think about being a commercial business owner. Are you going to go to the split-rate town, or are you going to go to the one that's uniform rate?
Absolutely. Yep, that's all I got.
If they also have any questions?
Hey, one. Jeanie, you touched on it, but can you just expand a little bit on how the assessors actually assess properties, particularly the residential?
Yep.
Because some people have concerns about it, because they don't understand.
And they absolutely don't. And let me be perfectly clear that if you ever have any questions about anything that our department does, please, please come in and ask us. Please don't go to the soccer field and ask the person there or the guy at the deli. Please come to our office. We are there to help. If you have any questions at all, our job is to inform you as what's going on. And we would much rather people have the correct information than have current information out there that maybe not be accurate. So, there are a couple of things that we need to do. We inspect properties for three reasons. We inspect for what's called cyclical inspections, and Mass General Laws says that in the Department of Revenue, who audit us and make sure that we're doing everything correctly, one of our requirements is that we physically go out and inspect every single property in the town on a cyclical basis, every 10 years. So regardless of whether or not you pulled the permit or had a sale or anything like that, we're going to be coming and knocking on your door trying to inspect the property. It is, we have got to do that. By law, we have to do that. That doesn't mean the residents have to let us in. We are required to make the effort, they are not required to let us in. So we inspect for cyclical reasons, and also if you pull a building permit or view of a sale. Because just like that says, we have to adjust the assessments based on the sale prices. So if the information we have in a sale home is inaccurate, it throws off all of our data. When we go out to inspect a house, there are very, there's a lot of variables that we look at. Size is obviously the biggest one, but it's also quality of construction. If you have two houses side by side, they're both ranches, they both have three bedrooms, they're both 1,000 square feet. This one over here has renovated the bathrooms, renovated the kitchens, and finished the basement. This one over here is your typical 1970s house, it hasn't done a thing to it. They have carpet on the floors, and they have linoleum. These two houses are not going to sell the same. They're not. This house is going to sell for a lot more, and that's also what we're looking at. We often tell people, whatever, you're going to have a realtor come in and say, "Ooh, new kitchen, ooh, new bathroom." That's the same type of thing that we're looking at. We don't go out to inspect just so that we can raise your taxes. That is a total, complete fallacy. We go out to make sure that our information is accurate. Half the time we go out, and maybe your property does go up because you finished the basement, renovated the kitchen. Sometimes we go out and you go, wow, we used to have this house as a good quality, good condition. Now you have three kids and a dog. The depreciation should be higher than it was last time we were there. So sometimes it goes up, and sometimes it goes down. Our number-one priority is accurate information.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have a final question.
Sure.
I'm sure people make tax abatement requests. What are, what would you say are typically the valid requests?
I would say that, okay, first of all, if you believe that your assessment is incorrect, you file what's called an abatement form. You have the month of, essentially, the month of January to do that. Now, at any point during the year, you can come in and question your assessment, or say, "You have my information wrong." We will come out and we will inspect at any time. But if you get your fiscal year '25 tax bill, and you look at the assessment and you go, "I could never get $600 for this house," you're going to come into our office and you're going to file an abatement application. If we have not inspected your house, that's going to be our number-one that we have to do. We need to inspect the house because we can't tell you what your house is worth if we haven't been into it. But you also have to realize that what our values have been certified by the Department of Revenue, so they think we're right. It is up to you to say why we're wrong. Sometimes people just come in and say, "I don't know what my house is worth, but I know you're wrong." And that's fine, but then we have to explain to them, this is why we think you're right. You have a ranch, we have your assessed $550, here's four ranches that have sold in your neighborhood, and they're all between $540 and $570. So we are pretty much right. But again, anybody has any right to question their assessment at any time, and actually, we welcome it. Because we are not, we're not infallible, and if, the last time we were out to your house, and you had a finished basement, and maybe you had a flood, and you took the finished basement out, we want to know that, because that is going to change your assessment. I would say probably half the people that come into our office, though, they're questioning more so their taxes than their assessment. And I mean, we can listen to the questions, comments, concerns about your taxes, but you're not filing an abatement on your taxes. You're filing an abatement on your assessment. That's what our jurisdiction is, your assessment. So again, we welcome people coming into the office and asking questions. And that's our job. Like, we're here to help everybody, and we're here to get, you know, get the information out there. So I would, again, much rather have somebody come into the office, call, email, whatever, and get the correct information.
Thank you.
Thank you. So what do you need from us today?
So, now we ask the Select Board to vote on four things. Uniform tax rate versus a split rate, small commercial exemption, residential exemption, and the open space discount.
Tracy, I had a question for you.
Sure.
This is a public hearing, so you may want to call for opponents and advocates from the audience.
Is there anybody who would like to speak? No? Okay, thanks, Dan. Just checking.
It's a thing.
Thank you.
Would you like a motion?
I would love a motion, thank you.
I'll make a motion as a slate. If there's a question, we can talk about it after, but I'll make a slate motion. I move that the Select Board maintain a single rate, vote no on small commercial exemption, no on residential exemption, and no on the open space discount.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanie. We are a little too early. Whoops, oh, the lights went off. Our next public hearing is not until 7:30. Do we want to take a few things out of order?
You have veterans agents.
Do we have enough?
We have enough time.
We have enough time, right? 10 minutes?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we jump ahead? We'll do, schedule the appointment. We have Veterans Agent, Town Memorial Committee for Veterans Day Activities update. So we'll start with you, Dave, if you want to come on up and let us know what's going on for Monday.
Hi.
Hi.
David McPhillips, Veterans Office, Town Veterans Officer. So I've got a couple guests with me. I have scout Natalie Susiani, and she's going to help by reading the proclamation. Then I'll introduce the Pembroke American Legion Commander, and he'll tell you all about Veterans Day.
Perfect.
Okay, so Natalie.
Thank you. I don't know how to be like, okay. Whereas since the Commonwealth's earliest days, thousands of men and women have served our country in defense of freedom and liberty. And whereas on November 11, 1918, after four years of conflict, the Armistice was signed in the forest of Campion by the Allied nations in Germany, ending World War I, the war to end all wars. Whereas, since that day, every November, people from around the nation have gathered to honor our veterans. And whereas, in November 2024, the world will commemorate the 106th anniversary of the Armistice that ended the fighting in World War I at 11:00 AM, November 11, 1918, the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. And whereas, there are approximately 300,000 veterans living in Massachusetts. And whereas, in recognition of the sacrifices made by those who have served our great nation, Massachusetts remains committed to supporting its veteran community through the HERO Act, honoring, empowering, and recognizing our service members and veterans. And whereas, today we are reminded of the great sacrifices and contributions our veterans have made to our country. And whereas, we honor and salute those who have served our country throughout the generations with honor, patriotism, and courage. And whereas, it is appropriate that all Massachusetts residents remember the bravery of those who serve their country so that their dedication and sacrifices serve as a reminder of the cost of our freedom. Now therefore I, Mara T. Healy, Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim November 11, 2024 to be Veterans Day. Wait, do I? Okay.
All done, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Now, Paul DeValle, the Commander of the American Legion, will tell us all about Veterans Day.
Well, to start off with, I will say that I don't know how many people really know that it was Armistice Day until 1954, with President, when the American Legion, as a nation, got with our President, President Eisenhower, and had you changed from just 201 vets to all vets. And from that point on, it became Veterans Day instead of Armistice Day. I don't know if you knew that or not. But anyway, getting up to the beginning here, on Veterans Day, we have my latest count, 20, from the American Legion, that will be shown up. And the only thing that I kind of request is that the front row be kind of reserved for us, if we could be. We're all going to walk in, we're going to march in with a stand in the lobby until exactly 11:00, and march in the best we can, at 11:00, to do that. And the reason why I'm saying the front row is because my speech is going to be a little bit different. Let people know inside here. Because that front row of veterans there that are sitting there, I'm going to ask them to all stand up, turn around, and face the audience, and then I'll address them. And that's the way I'd like to see if I admit that first row. This won't be a long speech, I promise you. 10 minutes, maybe the most, because I know a lot of people can't stand up longer than that. But anyway, that's what I like to do. If you can help me out with that, I'd appreciate it. I am the new commander, so I'm still trying to get my feet wet a little bit, you know, so just be with me. Okay. Any questions?
When did you take over?
How long ago was it, Dave? About, no, yeah, no, but it wasn't official until maybe two months ago, you know, from stand, you know, we had some internal problems. But yeah, and we are, right now, we are on a campaign for new recruitments, and I think you brought three in. We had another one last week. We are going to be putting a letter together that's going to go with...
Christmas.
The Christmas boxes that are being sent out to the veterans. And our letter is going to be to ask them, to tell them everything that we do, and ask them to join while they're still in the service, it's no cost to them, so that when they come home from active duty, they'll have a place to come and to know that they have a place where we can figure out all their benefits that they have, and give them a home that they know that we've been through the same thing that they've been through, and hopefully that's going to work. And we're going to be sending out, I believe, 35 of them. So if I get 10 out of the 35, I'm doing well. So we're running upswing with it, you know. We've got quite a bit planned coming up this year that's going to help the town and help us. That's it. Any more questions? No? No? All right, well, thank you, your time.
I would just say, Dave, if you and Commander DeValle can, some of my regrets, I generally attend every Veterans Day event. I'm going to be unable to, but it means a lot to me because I think it's the Select Board's duty to go to Veterans Day, Memorial Day, and high school graduation is part of what we do. So this will probably be the first one I missed since I've been on office.
We understand that completely. I've got some veterans that can't make it. They, you know, they have commitments with their families, and family comes first. It really does. That's what we fought about. Families always come first. Country's second. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
So just to be clear, this is on Monday, November 11, at the high school. Okay? So the ceremonies begin at 11:00, and we will have our own Tracy Marino give an address for the selectmen, Paul DeValle for the American Legion, he'll be our guest speaker, and then we will have the Pembroke Chamber Singers. I call them the choir, maybe I, because I'm old. And then we'll have refreshments. I'll be there as the Veterans Officer. I can answer any questions. As many people that can come, better. I think it's a good program, and hope everybody enjoys. So thanks a lot.
Thank you. Have we posted this on the town website? Could we do that along with the Facebook page?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Cool.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll talk to you later. I've got all the information you need.
Good. Thank you.
All right.
It is 7:30. 7:30, we have GOP Wine and Malt Liquor License Application, City Arena, Manager Peter Umbriana at 708R Washington Street. Pete, do you want to come on up?
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Thank you for having us back.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah. So we are hoping and keeping our fingers crossed for approval for a general on premises wine and malt liquor license. I'm here with owners Rob Williams and Martin Rimmer as well. So just a little background again on City Arena. We are a 25,000 square foot sports arena, indoor sports arena here in Pembroke. We have a small bar with 20 bar stools, a couple few long tables with benches for people to sit at. We're a one-floor building with three bathrooms. And our goal is to hopefully get approved for this license to, you know, really kind of take us to the next level. In three years, we've been lucky enough to really, with the support of the town of Pembroke and Math City, the Math City family, and a couple of the youth sports around the South Shore, we've been booming and it's been awesome. But we obviously know we need to remain competitive with the other local sports arenas. It's not really a competition. It's all good for the kids and for high school sports and the adult leagues as well. But obviously financially, I think this would take us really to the next level. And it would only benefit, allow us to hold events to benefit, you know, the Math City family, Pembroke community. I know we've done a lot for the PTO groups with Bryanville at the arena, and obviously just the various local South Shore towns that have youth sports that rent from us and have practices and all that good stuff and leagues, all that. So we're hoping to, you know, get this license to be able to sell beer and wine during our leagues, during our adult leagues, during different rentals and events as well, so we don't have to keep coming back for the one-day special license. And, you know, I'm confident that, I've worked in a restaurant for seven years, behind the bar especially, and I'm confident that we'll develop a team that will be also tip certified and, you know, on top of the game as far as serving.
You've only been there three years now?
Yeah, only three years.
I feel like you've been there a long time.
I know. Time flies, but it does feel like it's been seven years. Yeah, so only three years.
And this is a new license, correct?
Correct.
And all paperwork is, does anybody have any questions for, comments, anything? All accept a motion.
I would move to grant the application of City Arena LLC, Peter Umbriana, Manager, for a general on premises wine and malt beverages license to be exercised at the premises located at 708R Washington Street, Pembroke, Mass, a 25,000 square foot warehouse turned into a sports facility. There is one floor, five exit doors, three bathrooms inside, and a small viewing area with a 15-seat bar that was built subject to inspection by the building inspector and fire department and subject to the approval of the ABCC.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Good luck.
Awesome. Thank you.
All righty. Scheduled appointments. Nope, we did that. What was that?
I didn't see that.
Yep. Vote to accept the minutes of October 16th, 2024.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, you weren't there. Thank you. Vote to accept the resignation of Teresa Harling from Herring Fisheries Commission as alternate. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll move to accept the resignation of Teresa Harling from the Herring Fisheries Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And vote to appoint Kenneth Tran to 46 Taylor Point Road to alternate vacancy, Herring Fisheries Commission. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to appoint Kenneth Tran to the Herring Fisheries Commission vacancy term to expire 2026.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Vote, conditional renewal of annual precious metal and Class 1 and 2 auto licenses subject to treasurer's and inspectional services approval. Do we want to do this as two separate motions, auto and jewelers?
I was going to say, you were welcome to do it that way, but as they were listed on the public agenda, you don't have to leave them out. And there's a slight difference between them, but it's minor, literally.
Between the agenda and the material?
No, no, between the auto motion and the jewelry motion.
Oh, okay. Did you have something? Oh. Does anybody have any questions or comments? And if not, I would accept a motion.
I move to approve the renewal of the list of 2025 Class 1 and Class 2 auto dealers' licenses as listed on the public agenda, subject to the approval of the DMI, town manager, and treasurer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the jewelers' motion?
Move to approve the renewal of the list 2025 precious metal dealers' licenses as listed on the public agenda, subject to the approval of the DMI, town manager, and treasurer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, we have town manager's report.
I just have a few things. I'm going to be relatively brief, but these are important. First, I want to congratulate the Pembroke High School Boys Soccer Team for second year in a row qualifying for the MIAA soccer tournament. They actually received a first-round bye. They won their second game against Swamp Scott, three to nothing.
Swamp Scott?
Oh, those are small stalking grounds.
They crushed them.
Excellent. That's what I love to hear. Good job, Pembroke.
They're playing tomorrow, they actually hosted the Swamp Scott game, but they're playing tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. at Medfield High School. So let's, you know, cheer them on if you can, if you're in that way.
St. Bedford?
Medfield.
Medfield.
Unfortunately, I have to be here for a meeting, so I won't be able to attend. I did go to their game up in Walpole last year.
Did you?
And froze my butt off, but it was a great game.
Well, that's not going to happen this week.
They upset the number-one seed last year and ended up in the state championship game against Norwalk and unfortunately lost by one goal. But let's cheer them on. Great team, and let's hope they continue along there. Second thing I had was I want a brief discussion about the fire danger. Massachusetts has had a significant number of fires, including our Pembroke firefighters have helped to fight open wildfires in Ken. I just want to emphasize that please, no open fires, no fires outside at all. If you have an indoor fireplace, be my guest. But the fire danger in Massachusetts is just way, way, way too high statewide. We've, over the last seven days, we've had a significant number of fires. I mean, it is scary and it just keeps climbing. So please, no outdoor fires. Daylight savings time, I always do my safety message. It's dark 4:30 or 5:00. There's still students and adults out there walking around, so if you're driving a car, please, please be extra cautious until you get used to that driving at dusk again. And if you're a student or an adult walking or running on the roadways, make sure that you have reflective material on. I saw a gentleman last night on a bike, completely dressed in black, and he just, he passed me, fortunately, well away from my car, but I never saw him until he was right there. So, so let's, you know, make sure we don't have accidents in Pembroke. Veterans' Day, town hall will be closed on Monday, 11/11. And as a result of that, trash and recycling will be delayed one day next week. I want to take a moment to thank the town clerk and her staff for an incredibly well-run election. We had no incidents in the election, and I'm very pleased because the numbers were unbelievable. It just blew records away, so I'm very happy with that. And, you know, congratulations to those who won, as far as Representative-elect Ken Sreezy. I'm looking forward to working with him. And then Senator-elect Dylan Fernandez, also looking forward to working with them. It'll be good for the town of Pembroke. I'm going to reach out to them, let them settle for a few days. I'm sure they're both exhausted at this point. But, you know, and congratulations to all the other folks in Plymouth County and the federal folks on the election results.
Did you hear any feedback about how things went over the community center?
Really well. I actually went over and spent about 45 minutes over there just walking around, making sure things were well organized, that they were. The biggest challenge, which wasn't really a challenge because the town clerk had a handle on it, was, you know, people were used to going to a precinct, like, you know, some people would vote at Bryanville, for example, but when they came here, and all five precincts were in the same building, they didn't know what precinct they were. So the town clerk met people at the door and said, do you know what precinct you're voting in? And some, you know, probably 20% didn't know, and she would just, they'd ask her, had us look it up and direct them. So other than that, there were absolutely zero glitches. It worked really well.
So we had somebody the whole time letting people know what precinct they were, that they could look that up?
If they didn't know. Yep.
Do you, do you guys, you and the town clerk, plan on doing a postmortem of any sort to look at what opportunities there might be outside the community center and inside the community center to improve it further, like a continuous improvement mentality around it?
So I will be talking to the town clerk. Obviously, the town clerk wasn't 100% involved in the outside, that, you know, that would be the police now, I'll be meeting with the police chief and deputy chief, and lieutenant for that matter, and a couple of police officers that were there. I know that there was around the 5:00 hour, there was, you know, some traffic, and I know early in the morning, there was some traffic. But if you drive the center early morning or 5:00, there's always traffic, so.
I understand that traffic was significant from what I'm reading. But I voted early, so I did not have the experience. But I just want to make sure that we're doing a continuous improvement assessment afterwards and looking at opportunities that we can always improve that, because it's relatively new, and there's going to be gaps, and there's going to be opportunities.
So there was traffic, but it wasn't, you know, I experienced worse traffic on a day that came, so it wasn't.
And we had a detail out there.
Yeah, we had detail.
I drove through a few times.
The traffic moved. Yes, you know, there was maybe a two or three-minute delay, but the traffic moved and flowed.
I was there before it opened. There was a line, there was a lot of cars. Forty-five minutes where it was busy, but everything was moving in and out. The traffic deal was amazing. The detail was like really great, getting people in and out. I even heard anecdotally from people who came in and got in, they had a couple moments trying to find a parking space, but they got in, 7:15, voted, left, no problems.
That was my next question.
So overall, I thought it was a huge success. And there was, check with the director of the community center of regulation, he's got some ideas as well about improvements. So.
Perfect. What about people waiting in lines? Were there long waits in the lines that you heard of?
No, not at all. And I think, and I think we can attribute that to the sheer number of voters that voted early.
I guess I just worry more about, like, people who maybe can't stand for a long time, or?
Yeah, they would have taken that opportunity to assist them, but there weren't a lot. I mean, even at the heavy time, it was, to say no lines isn't fair, but there were no significant time delays. It was, you know, you got in, you got out.
Fabulous. Thank you.
That's all I have, so.
Do we have any liaisons updates?
Yeah, just something briefly, as leads on to advisory. Their upcoming advisory meeting, they actually plan on reviewing the select board's 2024 goals and priorities for opportunities and items that they may help advise upon.
Nice.
Do you have any examples of what they are thinking about?
Not specifically. They asked, for example, the last, I've been attending the meetings, and they asked if there's anything that they could help the select board with, and what we got going, what we've been talking about. And I said, we've actually got some goals and priorities that we're interested in. There's a lot of overlap with other boards and commissions around town, but, you know, as the advisory committee, if they would like to advise us and look through any of that, see if what, you know, anything that they think that they would like to help on or could help on and advise further, then that would of course be welcome.
Just one thing, the title of advisory committee is a bit of a misnomer. Every other city in town says finance committee. They are the finance committee in town, but that's their title, advisory committee.
Yeah. Yeah, so they're going to look at the goals and priorities and see to whatever extent that they have input with regards to their role, to what they can have input on.
Nice. Anybody else? Do we have any community comment from the board?
Yeah, I have one thing. Just to make sure that everyone knows that the Firehouse Food Pantry will be having their craft there this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the community center. Please come on out. They have over 50 crafters or vendors that are going to be there. So enjoy, enjoy small business and definitely help out the food pantry, because I actually have one of the tables that are there, and my table is definitely well worth it.
So it'll be spicy fudge?
Indeed. Yes.
We just had one email from a resident about making our sidewalk, not our sidewalks, our crosswalks more visible that you were CC'd on. I wasn't sure if you saw that yet.
When did it come in?
Sometime in the last couple of days. It was from Mike McDonough, and he was talking about the crosswalk on, by Fairway, not Fairway, Fairview, and the one in the center. And I know that there'd been discussion before about the one at the middle school, people flying through them while there's people waiting at them. I wanted to, I say, I know other towns like paint their crosswalks in instead of just have the white lines. I don't, maybe make that more visible in that way. But he had offered some suggestions, and I wasn't sure if you had seen them yet.
I did see that.
We've also had someone mention the crosswalk on Wanda Tuck by Beach.
Yep, that's another one. That one's scary. I feel like people are always flying down that street.
So we are embarking on some painting. I'll address, I'm meeting with the DPW folks on Thursday. I'll ask the question.
Okay. Thank you.
I had something that might be of interest for the board and maybe public. A resident at Fairwood, coming onto Barker Street, had an issue with a fence that was put up at the house on Barker Street. And I had, I spoke to the police chief, and he sent over the town's safety director, who did an assessment on it, and he determined that it has no public safety hazard at all as far as the police concerned. So it was, it was mentioned, it was investigated, and it's found to be of no hazard.
Like it was a visibility issue, they were saying?
The resident, the resident has a smaller car, and he's an elderly gentleman, so he maybe doesn't have the same vision as everyone, but the police assessed it in view of the whole community, not just them sitting in their SUV looking over the fence. So it was a complete assessment. Photographs and everything came in.
Okay. Anything else? Any community comments?
There's a few on the left.
All right, then.
Anyone?
I'll get over.
Upcoming issues. On November 20th, we will vote to adopt calendar events for 2025. On November 20th and December 4th, we will have our annual license renewals. December 18th, our license violation hearings if necessary. January 22nd, board votes to open annual warrant on February 3rd. And February 5th, town manager's FY25 budget updates. And that is everything. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.